That the other side, we try to be, you know, to do the right thing, white people, trying to do the right thing. The other side is trying to defeat us, to try to come up with some kind of, you know, some kind of like plans of scare tactics, manipulation, all kinds of different things to beat us, okay? And they will not be able to beat us. And I tell you why. I want to tell you, number one, this man right here, Mr. Harillack, he's a victim of that pushing and shoving between us and the other side. My son, Sergeant Joseph Haddad in the Troy Police, he's another victim when he tried to exercise his constitutional rights, just like Mr. Harillack trying to use, exercise his constitutional rights. And the other side trying to persecute him, and they are still persecuting my son since the beginning of the year until now by Captain Mott and Company in the Troy Police Department. You guys should have an investigation done to protect an innocent son of mine. Another thing, the Troy Police Department are, if not the best in the country, one of the best in the country. Everybody in Troy know that, we all agree. The problem we have with the leadership in the police department. When I am a Republican and the chief of police would pose with the, with the, with Tim Burns, police guard behind him, his badge on his belt, I like to ask the city attorney, she doesn't need your approval, for her to investigate that possibility of breaking the ethics. And on and on. And at next, next city council meeting, I will address you with some more. And thank you, and God bless you. Oh, just one, one more thing, please. I'd like to ask Mr. Zerlag to invite the TCU, a committee of them, to meet with him. Let him show what his programs, what he's doing, what he's spending, you know, what a project, and so forth. I mean, it's very simple. Thank you so much, God bless you.
The Council is going to take a five-minute break. Ma'am, I didn't call the next five people yet. Did I call you earlier?
Do you have to tell my name?
Yes, I'm going by the list here. The Council is going to take a five-minute break. We will be back in five minutes. The next five, the next five names.
No, it was Bill Leitner from the front.
Council's back in session. The next five names are... In this order, please. Gerald Stager. Gerard, excuse me. Gerard Stager, Tony Cruz, James Savage, John Furt, Barb Lehman, and Fred Eckout. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stager.
First, I'd like to say, Councilman Harillack, thank you so much for standing up against the people who wanted to censure you, and thank you, City Council, for ending this, this censure item. Councilman Harillack, I know you're a good person, you're a person of good integrity. I know you've put up with a lot over the past week because of this. And we in the United States take our First Amendment rights so much for granted, we could lose it on the national level just as easily as we could on the local level. And I know you've put up with a lot. Veterans Day is coming up in three days. None of us here have paid the ultimate price like some of them have, but some of us have sacrificed for freedom. I think you've made a small measure in the past week, and I thank you for it. One item that needs to be brought up in regard to the election was activity by the Friends of the Troy Public Library. It needs to have some public notice. I don't think they did it intentionally, but it's a problem. The Friends of the Troy Public Library is a 501(c)(3) charity, and they can only spend a very insubstantial amount of money on politics. Under the tax laws, no 501(c)(3) charity can pay $1 on behalf or opposed to a candidate. But also, their actions are regulated by Treasury Regulation 56.4911-2 that says there's a limit on what you can spend on direct lobbying. And it describes direct lobbying as, quote, "where a communication refers to and reflects a view on a measure that is subject to referendum, ballot initiative, or similar procedure," unquote. And it goes on to say, quote, "if such a communication is made to one or more members of the general public in that state or locality, the communication is a direct lobbying communication," unquote. The courts have held that 501(c)(3) charities are limited pretty much to 5% of their expenditures on lobbying expenses, such as the Friends of the Troy Public Library engaged in. There is the opportunity to make an election to bring it up to 20% of direct lobbying. If you look at the most recent Form 990, that's a public form that every 501(c)(3) must release, that every tax exempt group must release, they spent a little bit under $100,000 in the last fiscal year that they released a report. That means even if they went up to the 20% test and made the election, and there's no evidence that they made the election, if they spend $20,000, they violated the tax laws. The Friends of the Troy Public Library, we know, we know from the pre-campaign reports, gave $15,000 to a ballot questioning committee in favor of one of the proposals. Then they put out five publications, five printed materials, and distributed them. You could probably estimate that's a cost of at least $2,000 to $3,000 apiece. They probably spent at least $25,000 to $30,000. Understand that isn't on a vote yes or vote no piece that the tax laws talk about. They talk about where a nonprofit charity expresses a view about a proposal. And every expenditure has been about the view. The Friends of the Troy Public Library need to earn our public trust. I've donated to them. They need to open their books and records and let us know that they haven't broken the tax laws and to take care in the future that they don't do so. And I thank you, Mayor, and members of council.
Next, we'll hear from Tony Cruz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Tony Cruz. I'm a 16-year resident. Frankly, I had no plans to come and speak tonight. In fact, I specifically had plans to not speak this evening. Didn't even bring anything with me, which is just as well, because I think this is a good evening for eye contact. I received a copy of your letter, Martin, on Saturday, the 30th, I believe. And bear with me, because meaning no offense, on the contrary, the letter went straight into my recycling bin, because I saw the letter, skimmed through it very quickly, saw who wrote it, I thought, boy, I just hope Martin didn't spend a whole lot on postage, because I know what that can be all about, and he's preaching to the choir, I don't need to read this. I went inside to have breakfast, and I heard a rumor that he was being censured for that letter. So first thing I did, I high-tilled at the garage, went to the recycling bin, pulled it out, pulled the envelope out, and analyzed its contents in detail. And I'm going to get back to that in a moment, but before I do, I just want to say why I wasn't planning on being here, okay? I believe in the American process. I believe in the American experiment. And I believe that what happened on Election Day is basically, at risk of sounding a little facetious, freshly aged news. And it's over. And there was no time, this is not a time for me to say, I told you so. This is not a time for finger wagging. This is not a time for us to exult in the fact that, oh, great, library millage went down in flames, we won, good. This is not what it's about. This is about bringing to light, which I did in my email to you, to all of you, the fact that we have to put an end to dirty tricks. It seems like the latest tactic is to take a juicy item that's near and dear to everybody's heart or is very essential. Library was what we used in Troy. In the city of Monroe, they used garbage collection. And just simply recklessly yank it out of the budget, just take it out. And then say, the only way to put this baby back in is by the special millage. And that has to end. But getting back to Mr. Harillack, when I found out that he was being censured, and knowing how fair-minded all of you are, at least I thought many of you were, I thought to myself, whoa, this thing's got to have something very wrong with it. So I read it through very carefully, and I thought, hmm, paid for, I, 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 I. He followed every rule beyond, beyond hoil. And I thought, this is absolutely a travesty. And I meant no sarcasm when I wrote to you, Mayor, and I wrote to all of you and said, there's a terrible attempt to slander you people by implying that you want to slander this gentleman over here with a, with a censure. And I'm just here to basically repudiate that process. I'm here to publicly censure you, Madam Mayor, and anybody who used this as a cloaked opportunity that so much is implied that this gentleman would lie. The election is over, people, it's over. And his letter contained nothing but truthful and very honest and very real contingencies of what would happen, what could happen if Proposal 1 had passed. And none of us are going to get to know the real truth beyond that, are we? And all we had to go by was Mr. Harillack's very realistic and, in some cases, hypothetical possibilities of what could happen as a warning, as his opinion, as a, as a citizen. I never saw a letter that did a better job of downplaying his position. And anybody who believes that that letter was even the mildest attempt to present himself as a member of council and expressing his opinion, well, to put it very gentlemanly, that's just over the top. Shame on you, Mayor. Shame on any of you who went along with this. And thank you, Martin Harillack, for your courage and for making that note. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Mr. Savage, you're next.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. My name is James Savage. I've lived in Troy for 36 years. And for about the last 10 years, I have attended most of these council meetings. And I'm not going to talk about Martin Harillack, and I'm not going to talk about the library, but there has been a lot of mention of code of ethics. And in about the 10 years that I have been coming to these meetings, I've seen a double standard in code of ethics. And I've seen the times when the rules have either been bent or totally ignored. In the spring of 2009, the council disregarded the rules of procedure when they ignored the resolution on the table and voted to appoint Mr. Zerlag as interim city manager. Up to that point, Mr. Zerlag's name had never been mentioned, but two other people were in the running for that. I have witnessed many occasions when council has violated, bent the rules. And how often have we seen management remove an item from the table when the discussion goes against it? And for instance, and this one comes back to mind, and it haunts me, and I hope it haunts other people. A few years ago, the management proposed a resolution to condemn a property on Livonoy's to make it available to a developer for commercial use. The property, a nice, well-maintained home, was owned by a woman who claimed she had refused to sell to the developer and that no time had been approached by a city official. She had no idea she was about to lose her home. Now, the kicker is, the management had hidden the resolution in the consent agenda. And it would have been approved but for one concerned citizen who brought it to the council's attention. Needless to say, council members were outraged, and management immediately withdrew the resolution. But nobody was held accountable. And this came to mind because you were going to try and make Mr. Harillack accountable for his words. But I've never seen accountability in this room for the mistakes that have been made over the years. So if we're going to talk about accountability and ethics, let's go back to that case and reopen it and find out who was responsible for that despicable act. Furthermore, no, I wasn't going to talk about Mr. Harillack. So, but I will say that it's time to stop the excessive spending and stop putting money into consultants' pockets. Thank you.
Our next speaker, John Furt, is that correct?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I had a speech all written, and I'm going to throw it away. I came here right after the special election. And one of the statements I made, and Mr. Fleming just had yes to me at the time, was, if we're going to vote no on everything, where is your plan? It is your onus to give us a plan. I've yet to see a plan from you and Mr. Harillack. Now, if you can't give us a plan, then you're lying to us, okay? So we need a plan. Where is your plan? The rest of the council, this is not a private monopoly board. This is the city of Troy. You are making it possible for a lot of this to happen because you have your pet projects, and you're going to have to change your, your parameters. You really are going to have to rethink where you stand. And I don't know if you can do that. Your paradigms are locked in, and you've got to get out of the tunnel. We haven't even talked about the 30 police officers we're losing. Do you know what a compliment that is to the police department? We have a great police department. I don't want to lose 30 officers. I don't want to lose the library. I don't want to lose anything. I want it all back. What do we do to repair the damage that's been done? How are you going to do this? You have to, you have to basically save this city. You have a real onus on you, a real mantle to carry. That's it.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, I'm going to call the next five names. You can come up to the mic, just, just don't start up yet, okay? It's Barb Lehman, yes. Okay, next five speakers are Fred Eckout, Sharon McDonald, Linda Kenny, John Stevens, and Ed Kempen.
Hey, I'm Barb Lehman. I've lived here 25 years. I just wanted to question the closing of the library. When I, you know, I see evidence of other spending here in the city, the new lights over at Big Beaver in Rochester, that's a parkway there, and the Barnard House, they got moved, which are wonderful additions. But I hope that after police and fire, that the library, that you people can find the money to keep the library open. That's all. Thank you.
Is Mr. Eckout not here? Okay, then the next one is Sharon McDonald, and then Linda Kenny, John Stevens, Ed Kempen, Ron Dyer. Will those people please come line up there? Thank you. Yes, Ms. McDonald.
Hey, I'm Sharon McDonald. I agree it's a dark day because it looks like our library is going to close. Out of over 30,000 votes cast on the citizen-written initiative, Proposal 1 last week, the measure lost by only 680 votes. But for 680 votes, the staff of our library would be today making plans for the next 10 years instead of making plans to close our library over the next eight months. But for 680 votes, the people of Troy would be settling into the fact that we had saved our library, and I like to think that the fighting would now come to an end. Instead, we have all this. But for 680 votes, my neighbors wouldn't have decided last week to put their house up for sale, which will hurt my property values, to move their three children out of Troy to a city, any city, with a secure, well-funded library. Councilman Harillack, how many of the 680 votes do you think we may have kept if you hadn't deceived people in your letter? That if Proposal 1 passed, we would have to get a new building and all new books and computers? That wasn't true. And to me, that was where you did speak for council. What you said as fact was something that was to be voted on by city council. I just ran into a lady in the bathroom who said, well, of course it was a bad idea, because where would they have gotten the new building and the new books? But that wasn't really true, was it? And I wish you would admit that. How many of those 680 votes would we have kept if your close family and friends at Troy Citizens United hadn't dishonestly claimed the library board would be a taxing authority? Or maybe you could have told voters that you knew the two mills TCU claimed it was going to cost us was nonsense, and I know you know that. Or maybe you could have said that the $86 million the TCU claimed the millage would raise was pure fiction, because I know you know that, too. That would have been real leadership. That would have told me that you represent all of us because you cared about truth. But you let your friend's deception slide, and now the library will close. How is it that you and your friends said we could have a library with no new taxes one week ago, and then the day after the election, you told reporters we'll need a half-mile tax increase to save the library? Which one is the truth? Well, that's what it said in the Free Press. And it said that you, that the people should vote on that, which means another special election. That's what it said in the Free Press. But who can you trust anymore? You've taken our library to the edge of ruin, and now you want to be a hero. I won't fight your efforts to save the library. I hope you do succeed, but I believe you painted yourself into a corner, and you can't do it, or the library you do pull off will be unworthy of this community. Just as I asked your friend in February, I ask you today, if your goals are so noble, why do you and Troy Citizens United have to cheat to win every time, both in February and this time? Because it's just a game to you? Because playing the game your way will make you mayor next year? Well, this city's future is no game to me, but then I actually live here. Troy is my home, and I blame you for endangering its future.
Our next speaker is Linda Kenny.
Good evening. I didn't come to this meeting planning on speaking. This is kind of a spur of the moment. I've watched a lot of the proceedings going on. I've seen a lot of unprofessional conduct listed in the paper, be it true or untrue. My opinion of the city council as a whole has declined. I live in this city. I've had family members in this city since the 1940s. My grandfather came here. He built a farm from a little patch of land, and we've had family here ever since. I want my children to inherit a sense of community. Yes, I want them to have a library, but I also want them to understand fiscal responsibility. And fiscal responsibility comes first. Pulling at the emotional heartstrings of the citizens to achieve an end is not acceptable. There were other options. I, for one, never got a voice on the other options. I was told it's this or this, when we all know there were other ways. But those other ways were not made available to the Troy voters. I think Mr. Harillack's done a wonderful job. I commend him. He shows me the ethics that I want to point to my sons and say, this is the type of man I wish you to grow up to be. Thank you.
Mr. Kempen, next speaker.
I know the election results kind of had the city both heartbroken and somewhat, you know, some people are happy as well. It does leave our library in the air, and that is one thing Troy citizens are concerned about across the board. There are options available, and we've discussed these before. There's still money on the table in the budget. We need to open it up and renegotiate. And as you're aware, we have been circulating a petition to do, to request just that and ask that our city of Troy operate and maintain our library. Just so everyone is aware, we have completed collecting the petition signatures. They're right They're right here. There's over 2,500 of them in this stack. So thank you, everyone, for helping out with this. And, you know, we had over 40 people circulating these petitions. We had a wave of support, and it's almost unanimous. I would say it's over 90% support for our Troy library. So don't think that because somebody voted no on this issue that they voted against the library. It wasn't really a vote against the library. It was just a vote for most people to keep our library, but don't raise our taxes again. And, you know, we're struggling. You know, I myself am looking for work right now. So, I mean, there are a lot of people in the neighborhoods. And I've gone door-to-door, probably more in this last year than anybody other than maybe the friends of the library who've been pounding on doors, asking for the other issues. So more taxes, unfortunately. We do need a library. I don't know that we need a grandiose library, but we need basic library services, and that's a guarantee. And I will be submitting these hopefully tomorrow morning, if that's okay, Tony, at your office. And I just want to say thanks to everybody who has supported this initiative, and we do care about the library, and I don't want to hear any talk that says that we don't. And we're also working on one other thing. We're going to be working on a charter change that will guarantee the library will be a long-term, permanent part of our city of Troy. And the final text of that is still being determined, but that's going to be coming up in this coming year and hopefully presented for the November ballot this coming year. That's all.
Okay, our next speaker, five speakers are Ron, is this Ron?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Don't start talking, and I'm going to call the next five, okay? But you can come up to the mic. Ron Dwyer is there. John Getz, Joshua Hyman, Oksana Fardarkowicz, Dennis Corrigan, Janice Daniels, and Kathleen Martin. In that order, please, would you line up? Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
All right, well, thank you. My name's Ron Dwyer, and I've been a Troy resident since 1996. And I got to tell you, I've never seen anything like this in my last 14 years of living here. All right, first of all, I'm going to thank Martin here for getting involved. But I'll tell you this, I did not see his letter until after the election. I am not part of Troy Citizens United. I am a homeowner and a taxpayer here in the city of Troy. Just like everybody else here in the city of Troy, we've seen our wages go down, our property values go down, but yet the city, council, and the mayor here, you guys continuously spend. I mean, how much for that gateway there at Rochester Road and Big Beaver? Heard that was in the millions. We've got a couple of golf courses that are just bleeding money. Why don't we shut those down, use the money towards the library? Lock them up, make it parkland or forestland, do something along those lines. But it's just disgusting how this has turned into kind of a media circus here with this whole censor thing on something so, so minor. We've got channels two, four, and seven out there. We've got everybody waving their hands like this. I wouldn't be surprised if this makes YouTube and Troy becomes the laughingstock of, of the nation here. I mean, I'm seeing millions of views on YouTube with this, so I'm serious. I mean, this is kind of an embarrassment to, 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 to the city of Troy here. And anybody knows, you know, I want to keep the library open, okay? Every city needs to have an educational institution to draw people in, but also keeping taxes low brings residents in. And another thing too, I mean, I'm hearing stories of businesses left and right when they try to move in. They have to jump through so many hoops to try to get started. Let's make businesses, let's make it a little easier for businesses to come in here and start setting up. I mean, I heard of one place, one guy who wanted to, it was up in North Troy, bought a building, and he said that he was told he had to make some renovations before he could, before he could seal the deal. He ended up going somewhere else. So I don't know if that's true or not, but those are the things I'm hearing. So if that's the case, maybe we need to tighten or loosen up our zoning just a little bit to make this city a little bit more conducive for business. And another thing too, while I still have the time here, is I like how we made ourselves such a friendly city here with the texting ordinance that we have here. I mean, okay, we've got the statewide texting ordinance, but for people now to be chatting on the phone or eating a french fry or getting a drink, I mean, that's another great way to welcome business here and people into our city, getting them pulled over for eating a french fry or whatever. As far as I'm concerned, that's kind of another hidden tax. So I applaud Martin here for standing the ground and saying, "No more taxes here. We've got to tighten our budget. We've got to tighten the purse strings." And I appreciate everything that you've done. And you know what? A couple of people have said, "Hey, Martin for mayor, you know what? That seat's coming up open 2011." So I'd give it some consideration. And thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Getz, is that correct? John here? Okay, Joshua Hyman?
Hi, how are you guys doing? Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak. First thing I want to say is I'm new here. I actually came here a couple of years ago for work. I fell in love with the area and decided to stay, and I am going to be settling down in Michigan and hopefully having a family and doing all those great things. And I have a special soft spot in my heart for Troy. It reminds me a lot of the town that I come from back east. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I, some of you guys might recognize me from serving you a coffee at Starbucks over at Somerset Mall. That's where I've been the last couple of years. And I know from working in there that while that contributes a lot to the economy of Troy, that is not the heart and soul of what Troy is, and it never will be. There are two things that form the basis of any really great community like Troy and led to the community that I discovered when I came here, and that is the library and the school system. And the only thing that I wanted to say is that while I'm making my decision and businesses are making their decision, and we've been winning awards for the businesses we've been attracting, the only thing that I wanted to say to the council and the people of Troy is please never use the library or the school district as a political football or a political symbol because it, it isn't a joke. You know, it's something which if we don't maintain the standard of excellence that we have, we're no longer the same community. And I just wanted to say, thank you guys in advance, hopefully for doing the hard work to restore some funding to the library. But I've been hearing real tangible things about it closing, and that really worries me. So I'm going to get involved however I can to keep it open, and thanks for giving me the time to talk.
Next, Oksana. Good evening. Feel free to adjust the microphone.
Thank you. Good evening. Now you hear, yes. We live, my husband and I, we lived in Troy for 22 years. We love this community, especially because we came from the country Soviet Union, you know, and their people could not express themselves. And here in the United States, thanks God that we elect our officials and they serve us, and we are thankful to them. But we would like our officials to inform us what kind of projects they are going to create, whether we approve of them, whether we afford, can afford them, because we citizens have to pay taxes. So when I heard that Mr. Horlak was sanctioned, I thought, "Couldn't be possible. We live in a free country. That's his duty to inform us and every one of you. We all have to be very well informed before we go to vote, to see whether we can afford those taxes." We want the library. We approve of that because naturally that's very important cultural project that everybody uses library, and it's, and we have to have projects like that. But now there are times that the whole country is in crisis, and so is our state too. So I commend Mr. Horlak that he did inform us, because this vote wouldn't have come as it did luckily for all of us, because we all live on our pensions, social security, and taxes go up and up. So how can we live? So the council has to understand that whatever they propose, we have to know whether we can afford it. So the whole country is tightening the belt, so all the states, so our city too. So we are grateful that we live in a country like that, that we can express our will. And I think that Mr. Horlak did help a lot in this election, and we thank him very much. So please, don't forget that this is a free country, and let's keep it that, that way. God bless America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dennis Corrigan.
Good evening. Good evening. I've been a resident of Troy for 31 years. I paid taxes for 31 years. I've enjoyed living in the city of Troy for 31 years. It's been a great place to live and raise children. Martin Horlak, I received your letter the day before the election. I just want to go on record as saying, in my opinion, it contains serious misrepresentations, if not lies. It was conduct unbecoming of a member of the city council of Troy, and I would have been disappointed if there was no response. So I want to thank Mayor Schilling for your motion. Furthermore, I did not vote for you, but I do not agree with the disrespect that has been thrown at you tonight. You did not deserve that for all the years of service to the city of Troy, and I want to thank you for that. For that matter, it's sad for many of us to see any of you treated with disrespect, including Martin. This is a great city. I know in some way we all care about it and we need to move forward. There are larger issues. We have a great library, and we have a lot invested in it, in tax dollars and donations. And to close that library, people that claim to be concerned about waste of tax dollars, that would be a tremendous waste of tax dollars to not maintain that valuable asset as part of our, our blood of existence here in Detroit. And we need to find a way to save it. People have talked about rearranging the budget. Well, we didn't lay off the 50 police officers. Well, I think we have laid off police officers, and I think there are open books in the city of Troy where you can look, go to the website, and you can see the budget and the headcount. And probably there's already been too many layoffs of police officers. Troy's been a great place to live and raise families. We've been very fortunate. We had Kmart, we had Saturn, we had Delphi, Oakmont Mall, Somerset. These places are not putting in the property tax dollars that they were. We got a lot for very little in the past. We should be thankful for that. But I, I lost my high-paid corporate job in '07, but I think we ought to shoulder our responsibilities to live with the traditions that we've been doing here. Unfortunately, I think there's a national trend, there's a notion, "We're not responsible to pay taxes. It's unpatriotic to pay taxes." We all got here tonight on roads that were paid for by taxes. I don't think this is just about the library. I think the library is only one thing. I think this mania for cutting taxes has gone too far, and I'd like to see you work together to put this city back on the right track. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Janice Daniels.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I want to say, first of all, I thank God I live in America. That's a fact. And that one of our most treasured constitutional rights is the right to free speech, and it would be almost funny if it wasn't so tragic that right on the heels of NPR's CEO firing Juan Williams for his expressing his right to free speech, you try to censure our councilmen for expressing his right to free speech. And as far as I'm concerned, he's a studious observer of local politics, and I find that as a councilman, he owes it to his constituents to give us his opinion. And that is exactly what he did, and he had every right in the world to do so, as all of you do have that right. You have the right to have lawn signs on your yard all over the place. Nobody came and complained to you about that. So I think it was a serious misreading of the Constitution and of your code of ethics, quite frankly. That is basically all I want to say. I thank God I live in America, and I say, "Horlak for mayor." Thank you.
Kathleen Martin is our next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor Schilling and councilmembers. I have a little different perspective, particularly after a very long day last Tuesday. People who refuse to believe that the library could really close must pay attention and believe that Troy is at the final stretch in that harsh reality. That really exists, thanks in large part to actions of Councilman Horlak and his allies. I believe that the Troy Millage proposal failed directly due to the distorted information distributed by Troy Citizens United, Martin Horlak's letter, and the Friends of the City of Troy Library with no new taxes and their petition drive. Let's take a look at the sequence of events that brought us here. First, Councilman Horlak and his allies generated a ballot issue which restricts our city council from adjusting the approved miller rate, just as our country was sliding into recession. Second, Councilman Horlak actively opposed the ballot proposal to adjust the miller last February. Now he's actively participated once again in the defeat of the library proposal with the letter he sent to, on his own, to a significant number of Troy voters. Mr. Horlak's letter appeared to me to be a direct endorsement of the Friends of the Troy Library with no new taxes position, with the addition of, addition of a suggestion that there might be the need for a half-mill of taxes. It would have been nice if that could have come about when the citizens for the Troy Library were trying to develop their proposal. Instead, you seem to have collaborated again with the opposition. While you might be within your freedom of speech rights to do this, I seriously question your ethics in doing it and the distortion of truth in your letter. The group you chose to endorse was out in full force on election day, and I got to witness it for over nine hours. At Woodside Bible Church polling site for precincts three and 12, there was active campaigning against library millage proposals by the Friends to say, "You know who they are." Throughout the morning, Mr. Kempen was there seeking signatures from voters as they walked through the parking lot. In the early afternoon, he turned the clipboards over to one of the young men wearing a Rocky for Congress sweatshirt, and then it got really interesting. This young man was much more assertive, immediately started calling out to voters as they walked by. And then a little while later, police came by, talked to us all. He was obviously checking to see how he was going. And once the policeman was gone, it got very interesting. The young man stood up, started moving around, walking actively up to voters, and ultimately standing right in front of me where I was holding my Troy Library, Save the Troy Library sign, within earshot and saying, "If you," pointing to me, "vote against those four ballot proposals and sign this petition, you will have a library with no additional taxes." And I watched it go on and on and on. And then he went up another notch and started targeting. And he was targeting people who, just looking at them, you could tell were of Asian or Oriental descent. They happened to be very petite people, and this guy was, I mean, these people are smarter than me, and this guy looked like a wrestler.
Miss?
By the end of the day, I'll wrap it up. The end of the day, they had three people there, and no one could walk into the poll site without being directly approached by one of them. You've actively helped it fail.
The member of the audience who's talking out, please, that's not correct. Mrs. Bernardi, I understand from Councilman Bell, to me, you wanted to say something quickly?
Thank you. Yes. One thing I've learned in life is when you make a mistake, own up to it. And when I went back to my seat, I promptly took out the article because I thought I was right, but I was wrong. And, and I do want to apologize. It was Mayor, ex-Mayor, former Mayor, Gene Stein, who came out with a libelous smear against Councilman Horlak. And so I do apologize to Mayor Schilling and to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that signed up to speak. So we'll go on now to the next portion of the meeting. And this portion of the meeting is response or reply to public comment. So councilmembers, I turn to you to either ask questions or make a comment at this time. So councilmembers, I turn to you to either ask questions or make a comment at this time. Anyone have anything?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
If I could give the Police Department an opportunity to respond to some comments that were made regarding members of their department and some other issues, if they'd care to respond, I'd like to open the mic to them.
Mr. Zerlag, is that satisfactory to have? Would you like to respond?
I'm going to leave it up to Chief Mayor. However, there was one item that was brought up, if I may, Gary, you can take the microphone, please, about an accusation of Chief Mayor endorsing a Tim Burns for county commissioner. I'd like to be able to open that up because I did have some involvement in the resolution of that matter, and then ask the chief to fill in any blanks that I may have left. Chief Mayor came to see me a while back, indicating that his photograph with Mr. Burns at a non-political event was shown in a brochure that Mr. Burns was publishing for his campaign literature that would lead one to believe that Chief Mayor was endorsing Tim Burns. Additionally, there was a sentence or two about the virtues of Mr. Burns' ability to be a hard worker or something to that effect, a benefit to the community. And Chief Mayor indicated that the letter was actually written by himself, but it was not for any political reasons. It was for a personal reference. I've written personal reference letters myself during my career, dozens of them. And as a solution, Chief Mayor and I contacted Mrs. Martha Prego, who is the Director of Ethics at the International City Management Association, and put the issue to her. Mrs. Prego suggested that immediately Chief Mayor contact Commissioner Burns and tell him to immediately remove his name from any campaign materials, and then to follow that up with the letter, which Mr. or which Mr. Mayor subsequently did. I've got a copy of that letter if you wish to see it. Additionally, today, I received a letter from Mr. Burns apologizing for utilizing Mr. Mayor as an endorsement to his campaign, when Mr. Mayor indeed did not endorse Mr. Burns.
Chief Mayor, there were some comments that Councilman Slater wanted you to clarify in addition.
Yes, ma'am. I can speak to those, or if you would just like to respond to some comments that were made by Mr. Haddad regarding personnel within the department.
Thank you. Mr. Zerlag has, I believe, more than adequately stated what occurred with Mr. Burns with many people. I attended many community events, and I often get my picture taken with people. I had a picture taken with Mr. Burns. It wasn't intended for any political purposes. I thought it was clear to him it wasn't intended for political purposes. After I clarified with him, after it appeared, he did retract them. He tried to stop using them. He wrote a letter of that effect to Mr. Zerlag. Mr. Zerlag has explained a comment that was attributed to me. It had nothing to do with any political things. It was essentially a job reference letter, because I see Mr. Burns regularly at the Troy Community Coalition. I'm very involved with that group, as are other members of the Police Department, and Mr. Burns, and many people that are currently in council are also involved with the Troy Community Coalition. It's a good group. I think I've addressed that issue. There was another issue regarding Captain Mott that was brought up. Captain Mott is a, for example, a police commander in the Troy Police Department. She has done an excellent job. She continues to do an excellent job in the face of these kind of accusations. She will continue to do an excellent job. I don't know what else I can say regarding Captain Mott. She does a very good job for me and for the citizens of Troy.
Thank you.
There was another point regarding layoffs. Did you want me to address those numbers?
Please.
Please. Within the Police Department, we've eliminated seven positions, and we haven't filled an additional 10 positions. So we're currently down 17. Under Option 1, by the year 2013, we're supposed to be down 47 positions. So at this time, we've attained 17 of those 47. I hope that clarifies that point.
And that being down 47 positions is in addition to not having funding for the library, not instead of, correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's all articulated in Option 1.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilman Horleak?
Yes, if I can just ask the chief a question. Thank you, chief, for coming up here this evening.
Certainly.
Has your department had any actual layoffs? Or, because I just want to make sure we're on the same page here, that those of us on council, as well as people that are here in the audience and watching. You mentioned that there were seven positions eliminated and 10 not filled. Were there any of those that actually resulted from a layoff?
No. There were seven positions were eliminated and 10 positions are unfilled. There were no layoffs.
Yeah, thank you. The other question I have is, do you know if Mr. Burns, if there's any money left, or if he's able to publish in, because I think this hap, the reference somebody mentioned to me was the Troy Times, if he would be willing to just put some sort of a clarification in the Troy Times, or even maybe the Troy Times would put a little article in there just to clarify it for us?
I can't speak for Mr. Burns.
Is that something that we could ask him to do?
Imagine anyone could ask him to do that, yes.
As a, I mean, since this involved you, I just thought that might be, you know, a good way to make sure that, because I've had this question, and I've said, I don't think the chief endorsed anybody.
I absolutely did not endorse anybody.
And so I think that, you know, the final thing is, if he's willing to approach the newspaper, if we ask him, you know, you as the chief, that's what I would do. And I'm just wondering if you would be amenable to that as well?
I could speak to Mr. Burns. I would anticipate that as a result of this, I don't normally get up and address the council about this type of thing. I would anticipate that I would get some, there would be some news coverage in the Troy Times also.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Zerlag?
I don't know the, I don't recall the exact number, but every year, we get a form from the federal government, which indicates, as an organization, what our salaries were from one year to the next. And I believe we just received a form through Mr. Lamorato that spoke about what the salaries in Troy were from September 30, 2009, to September 30, 2010. And John, what was that reduction number? Do you recall that?
I'm Mayor and City Council. It's Form 941, which is a federal tax form. It's filed with the federal government. We're preparing our quarterly report, which will be presented next meeting, the wages from 9/30/2010, four-years period versus 9/30/2009. The city of Troy's wages were down $4 million, or a little over 11%.
Thanks, John.
While we're on numbers, Mr. Zerlag, the valuation of homes in Troy this past year dropped, what was it, 12 and 1/2%? I think I spoke to Mr. Lakari about this, but I asked him for next year, because some people commented about their tax bill going down because of reduction of valuation. And next year, residential is to go down 10 and 1/2%, and commercial industrial is to go down 20%, is what he told me. So there will be even less money, and this is cumulative each and every year.
I was at a symposium today put out by Oakland County, and Mr. Patterson, Oakland County Executive, indicated that, based on numbers from his experts, from 2007 through 2013, this is countywide, not Troy-specific, but Troy is part of that, from those years, real estate values will have plummeted about 54%.
Right.
And we are not recipients of city income taxes or sales taxes.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Mayor Pratim Kirwan, would you ask your questions, and then would you take over? I have to leave for a minute and be right back.
Yes. Could you have another one?
Go ahead.
Okay, yes, thank you. Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up there, Mr. Zerlag, we also heard today in the same presentation, 10,000 foreclosures in Oakland County, and that did not include walkaways, those who, these were just bank foreclosures. We realize that millage times value equals tax, and that when there is a glut, when there are more houses on the market, scarcity creates value. And those were points that were made today in Mr. Datto's presentation.
That's correct. What was also mentioned is that there could be a time when even the banks don't pay on their foreclosed properties the amounts owed on property taxes.
So that there'll be a reduction because the banks won't pay. And they have been seeing that in the county, and we may be experiencing that here as well.
That was one of the indications, yes.
I wanted to follow up on something regarding the Troy Lease Department, because Councilmember Horleak mentioned that positions that were unfilled and so on, that police layoffs for the next two years were delayed because we, as a council, during our budgeting process, devoted some money, cancellation of nonessential capital projects, $2 million set aside for the trail system, $700,000 for park development, $1.1 million for civic center, so that we could keep public safety standards, however, only for one year.
That's correct. All capital projects do. When capital projects are eliminated in favor of general operating subsidies, a capital project is a one-time cost. A person is a recurring cost every year.
And nevertheless, there have been layoffs in nearly all city departments, some in fact closed completely.
I reduced the workforce by 145 people July 1st.
Loss of 125 employees, 55 full-time employees, additional layoffs of 106, and then 30 employees in 2012, 2013. And we heard today at the same symposium, and I've asked Mary Redden to send a link to staff and to our city council members so that they can see the material that we had today, that the county executive began by saying that 2014 is the cliff.
That's correct. I believe in 2014, even Oakland County is going to be facing about a $50 million shortfall.
So we were applauded for having a multi-year budget, something that was taught at today's symposium. However, we're not there yet. 2014 is still looming out there. And as you pointed out, that the closing from today's program says some things, that change is hard.
Yes.
Just do it. And that, in fact, when it says doing more with less, we're doing less with less, and less means less. And they were very specific with the county to look long-range and look backwards. Is that what we've done?
That's what we have done, yes. Without a plan, you can't act in a functional manner. If you have a plan, you can act.
And then finally, there began by, I think, the second speaker, who said, no one said anything about the library closing. Is that true?
It's, I no longer call it Option 1. It's the three-year budget that we have. The three-year budget closes the library June 30, 2011.
And that was completely laid out prior to the February election?
Yes.
Completely laid out prior to this election?
Yes.
There's zero planned in there, that if anyone was going to go back and put something into the budget to make that happen, $12 million would have to come out some other way, because it's not filled in?
At the apex of our municipality, with a very full-service library open seven days a week, the budget was about $4 million. So a three-year budget would be $4 million times 3, $12 million. Yes, that's correct.
Are there other comments or questions regarding public comment?
Mayor?
Anyone else? Oh, could I call on Mrs. Blumar, City Attorney, then back to you? Councilman Slater, is that all right?
Absolutely.
I would be happy to defer to Councilman Slater also, but.
I've had my turn.
I just wanted to clarify, this is the second time that public comment has, one of the speakers has indicated that there's a large amount that's paid on lawsuits and that it's not kept within the public documents. And I just wanted to clarify that any time that there is a lawsuit, that it is approved by council in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. So that does require that to be brought before the council for approval, and the amounts are certainly within any proposed settlement. So it is public information.
Councilman Slater?
I just want to follow up with Mr. Geiger pointed out tonight and Mr. Vert. With all these people here today, I think it's time that our citizens heard a specific plan from Mr. Horleak about how he's going to save the library. No generalizations, a specific plan, and I'd like to turn the mic over to him right now and have him tell everybody what his specific plan is. We've heard all the numbers tonight. All I've heard for six months is generalizations. We've had six months to look at this budget. I want to know, and I know the citizens out there want to know, and the public want to know, a specific plan. Please tell us tonight what that plan is.
Mayor?
Councilman Horleak?
Well, first, I'll start by saying that it's important to note that the first, the first time council went on record for, to adopt Option 1, was during the budget studies, or the adoption of the budget. And that's when the multi-year plan was adopted, and effectively, Option 1. John Zerlag's Option 1 was adopted by a 4 to 3 vote. And the majority of council decided to structure the multi-year budget around the presumption of closing the library, okay? And when we're talking about if the library is going to be maintained or not, I would not say that it lost by 675 votes or even four votes. It lost by one vote. One member of the city council was the fourth vote to close the library. And I can give you plans, Councilman Slater, until I'm blue in the face, but if a majority of council isn't going to buy into it, you know, I don't run this city council, and as it's been reminded to me, I don't speak for council. I speak for Councilman Horleak. And if you would like me to give you examples of areas where we can save, I think you have to start with the tone from the top, okay? And what you need to do is you need to have a city manager who is not drawing a pension and also working for the city of Troy. I know I said last time that that decision was made, but I vehemently object to it. And I think for those who are facing layoff, it sends a very poor signal. I think it's also unfortunate that the city manager has a multi-year buyout if the city council fires him. It's unheard of. I think we also need to look at, I think we need to look at whether or not we should offer comp time to senior-level managing positions for attending city council meetings and other meetings. I'm sorry, but this is an obligation of the city manager's job that he attend our meetings. But getting more to the meat of the matter, we have an actuarial evaluation for the city's pension fund for December 31, 2009, that still has yet to come to the city council. And that's going to have an impact on future years' budgets, because it's going to require, because of the performance of the pension fund in 2009, it's going to require less of a contribution. But speaking about contributions, we're almost in 2011, and we're going to have the same matter, so we need to get these things sooner and implement it into our budgeting process. Speaking of contributions, the 68% markup on base salaries, I think it's 68, maybe it's higher, because I don't have the paper in front of me. My memory serves me that you're looking at a 68% markup on base level salaries for total cost of the city. That's extremely high. You need to, I think it's fair, when you have had people who've come, who we know because they've come to us or revisited them throughout the city, and they've had cutbacks in their job, in their salaries and benefits, that, you know, if we can keep people at their salary, fine, because like Mr. Henderson came up here earlier this evening, he said the salaries are fairly, fairly good within, they're fairly reasonable, and I would say they're not. not terribly out of line except in a certain number of key areas. But it's the benefits that are costing the city dearly. And also the, the issue of all of these layoffs, and yet effectively, you don't see any consolidation of departments. Effectively, you do not see any consolidation of departments. You can also look, and by the way, these dollars are adding up if you actually implement these things and put them into action. And as far as the television, WTY, I scratch my head because we have WTY and we have Community Media Network. Why is there the duplication of personnel? Why is there the duplication of, of equipment? And so I use that, those as examples. If you would like me to put together a budget, my own Martin Howrillak budget, that means nothing other than Martin Howrillak would love to see this budget, I can certainly do that. But the, the point that I'm trying to make is it takes the buying in of the city council. And if we decide that we want to structure a multi-year budget around the library, then, you know, we can do that. But it doesn't really make any sense for me to put something together, and I'll do it if you, you know, but for me to put something together and, you know, council not to, to intend to act on it, I think the more, I think the way that that's actually going to work better is if we work together and find a solution as a unified council, at least unified on the goal of integrating the library into the multi-year budget.
Is there further?
Mayor?
Response or reply? Yes.
I think I have to use.
That's the plan that you, you asked the people to vote down Proposal 1?
Was that someone in the audience?
I think it's irresponsible.
Please don't do that.
To, to ask the voters to do something and not have a plan. You have to have a plan to transfer money from somewhere else to save the library. You can't ask people to vote something down and not have a plan for them. I'm going to ask next week the same thing. I would appreciate if you bring back a plan to present.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilman Howrillak?
I, I would, I would offer to, to Councilman Slater that I don't have the ability to interact on a daily basis with department heads, with people that work in this city. The charter specifically says that the city manager runs this city. Councilman Howrillak does not run the city, Councilman Slater. On a day-to-day basis, I do not have access to that. I do not even have access to the accounting records of the city, and neither do you. So did you have a plan in May when you voted to exclude the, the library from, from the budget? Or did you, did, you really would like to see the library closed?
No.
This conversation is, is completely, it serves, it serves nothing. This conversation that Councilman Slater, you and I are having, does not do anything to further the objective that I have.
I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to you about this.
That, that's fine.
And I'd, I'd be happy to sit down and debate this with you somewhere in a forum. So why don't we work on that?
I think it's, Mayor, if you don't mind, I think it's important that this city council decide whether or not they want a library. And if you would like it to, if, if, if this city council has a, has a desire to keep a library, then we should actually work to include it in the budget. That's my point.
Okay, any other response or reply to public comment? Mr. Zerlag?
Just want to make a response because I do believe that a stationary target sets a poor example. And as far as my pension is concerned, I receive a pension for past services performed. If you took a look at the general fund cost for me being city manager and compared it to the last person who was city manager, it's probably between $40,000 and $50,000 less. I'm quite sure that when I leave, the next city manager that you hire will make about $40,000 or $50,000 more in terms of cost, and I'll still be getting my pension. So you just have to get your arms around someone that's older that has a pension and a job too. I'm one of those folks. As far as benefits are concerned, you don't need access to the day-to-day operations to look at our labor contracts. Most of our employees are covered by labor agreements, and all benefits are contained therein. You do not want a city where you're upside down for your management employees receiving less benefits than your labor groups. I am negotiating concessions in accordance with the strategic number that you had given me as a governing body. I'll be presenting that next week in closed session for the fire service staff officers. It is not John Zerlag's Option 1. It was the governing body that had a plan or a vision to protect the core competencies of police, fire, and infrastructure maintenance. And you cannot engage in magical thinking because you have a fiduciary responsibility to balance the budget. If you don't, a receiver comes in and balances it for you. We have a declining revenue line, and I've got labor contracts to honor. We'll do the best we can, but the final analysis is it's not a budget about expenditures, it's a budget about revenues, and we have to meet a declining revenue line every year.
And Mr. Zerlag, there were comments made about doing cuts and restructuring and consolidation of departments, which we had and been implementing and had planned on doing even before the February millage proposal was proposed. Would you care to speak to that?
Sure. Chronologically, the planning department was cut 60 percent from five employees to two employees with a part-time consultant coming in a couple of days a week. That saved about $200,000 a year annually out of the general fund. The entire building department was expunged from a clerk typist all the way to the director of building operations. That was about 22 full-time people. We now have privatized that entire operation through a company called SafeBelt. SafeBelt, by the way, is going to be building their Michigan or Midwest headquarters in the city of Troy. That announcement should be coming out next week. We fully privatized all of our golf course operations, and so all the full-time and part-time people in the golf course operations are now handled by Billy Casper Golf. Billy Casper Golf has about 135 golf courses that they manage citywide. In fact, Oakland County, that has about 22 golf courses, asked us for the specifications. They may look into that themselves. We cannot close the golf courses because we have a, we have debt service on Sanctuary Lake. If we were to close the golf course, the money that we still have to pay in bond payments would exceed our, our costs for being open because we do make some money to cover our operational costs for Sanctuary Lake. The engineering department has been cut by 50 percent. Over 13 people have been cut, that department. And we have found the optimum balance, as proven by Steve Van Detter, our city engineer, and Bill Hootery, our deputy city engineer, whereby when you have a $100 million rolling capital budget for six years for streets, sidewalks, water, sewer, and storm drains, we found the optimum mix. We are now going and proceeding with the International City Management Association, pardon my voice, to look at virtually every other department, including the police department and my department, to find the most optimum way to run the city. That's what we've been doing.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Bell Jomani?
The salary chart of department heads and senior management keeps coming up. And I understand that the original numbers were aggregated from figures that were given by our Human Resources Department. Would you please, and, and I don't want you to do it tonight, I, I would like you to get a memo from Ms. Sears that talks about what is salary, what is, which kind of benefit, which are actual general fund expenses and which are not? And I also, you know, the pensions keep coming up, and the pensions are a contract with existing employees. So yes, there are some benefit, parts of the benefit package that we can tweak from time to time, and we'll continue to do that. But I do want a breakdown of what that aggregate number is and what it actually costs the general fund for those employees. Because like Mr. Henderson, for most of those jobs, the salaries are not out of line, and the pensions are contracts. So those cannot be changed. So they are what they are.
Now, just for clarification, there are two other areas of, that were mentioned tonight that include sick leave pay and vacation leave pay. Those are liabilities, and essentially if, if they're taken, there's not a payment in that regard. We do budget for an assumption that there will be a payout. Do you want that number with an asterisk, if you will, saying that this may or may not be a liability?
Absolutely, because it's, it's part of that aggregate. And I know that often that causes nothing, you know? So we, we need to know, and if there's, if there are historical figures or a percentage on that, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, a follow-up to that?
Yes. Councilman Kerwin?
Appreciate Councilmember Bell Jomani bringing that up because I think that's important. I think also, Mr. Zerlag, in that memo, please point out what is common governmental practice. Because if you were in a school district and someone could take so many days of sick leave, money would be put in there although never used, and that's best practice. That's what one should be doing, and that's how we ensure that we balance and that we're in compliance. I think it is important to point out which pensions and are, are, again, we have to stay in accordance with the laws, are ongoing. And we don't have that many left, do we? We have those who have retired, and we do have to honor those under the law.
We have two types of, we have two types of pensions in Troy. We have defined benefit pension, which has a legacy cost. It, it runs as long as the retiree and her or his spouse live. And then we have the defined contribution pension system, which is similar to private sector pension plans, and that has no legacy cost, no tail when the employee leaves employment. There's no obligation by the city. We are now at a point, because we started doing this in 1997, where about 70 percent of all current employees are in defined contribution, about 30 percent are in defined benefit, and that is essentially guaranteed payment whether or not there's a, a labor contract involved. I can have that, that distinction for you. I think if you were to look at those that are not in the union, and I, I'll have Peggy do this as well, but if memory serves me correctly, a little more than 10 percent of the entire exempt service is in defined benefit plans. You're talking a very small number of existing employees that are not organized that have that plan.
And weren't we one of the first cities in the area to do that with the defined benefit contribution?
Yes, and it paid off hugely, especially in the future. We are also one of the first cities to have all new hirers, including the police department, no longer be eligible for retiree healthcare. So all new employees that come in, instead of getting a guaranteed stipend when they leave on healthcare or guaranteed insurance premium paid, they now get a stipend, if you will, based on a percent of payroll, and they contribute as well so that when they leave, there's a pile of money to pay their medical expenses. But again, that has no tail like a defined contr, like a defined benefit retiree healthcare plan has.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Kerwin?
Again, I'm glad that the council member brought that up. I know that that top 20, which was requested from this table by Mr. Howrillak, and then ended up being on the TCU flyer, has raised a lot of questions. And having a full memo and an understanding of what those things are, I think would be helpful for members of the public. Thank you very much.
Any others on this?
Mayor?
Councilman Howrillak?
I, I do want to thank Mr. Zerlag for preparing that memo because it is, it is detailed. And the, the memo I requested from you, Mr. Zerlag, was in response to a constituent, I think it was in August or September, about that time that whole Bell California thing was going on. And I said, okay, I'll, I'll see if I can find out. And boom, we did it. Thank you very much. And it, I encourage people to read the detail, by the way. But the question I have for you is the defined contribution. I know we've asked this question before, but, you know, we'll go over it again because it seems to be, be brought up, or perhaps whatever the case might be. What are the, what is the city's contribution and the defined contribution? And what are the, and I know it varies by employee group would be my question.
I don't know the answer. I know generalities. I think it's between 9 and 12 percent, but perhaps Mr. Lamorato knows specifically what the percentage is for each employee group. If not, we can submit it next week.
I'm Mayor and City Council. There are several groups that have it. It's, probably ranges anywhere from employer contribution from 9 to 12 percent, employee contribution from 3 to 6 percent in that area.
And are all employees mandated to contribute?
That are in the plan, yes.
Okay. Now, as far as the defined benefit plan, are employees required to contribute to that?
Yes, they are.
And that amount is?
I think anywhere from 1 and 1/2 percent to 4 percent of pay.
And has that been the case in every year for the last 20 years?
No. That has, we've increased the employees' contributions several times during that time.
And in the last 20 years, how many years was there no employee requirement or, yes?
No employee contribution?
Yes.
Not, I'm not aware of any that there ever has been.
Were there years in the last 20 years when there were no contributions from either the employee or from the city?
From the employer?
Yes.
I thought you were talking about employee. The employer, there were, there might have been a couple of years, two or three years possibly in the, I'm going to say the 90s, mid 90s, later 90s, that there were no contribution required because of our funded position.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. If there are no others, we'll go on with our postponed items, and that is the Paint Creek Center for the Art, Regional Arts. There's a motion on the floor to nominate the Image and Arts Council of Troy to be represented, represent the city of Troy in the Paint Creek Center for the Arts 2011 Regional Arts Awards Competition. Is there further discussion of the resolution that's before us? If not, then the vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?